We're calling the meeting to get things started on time. We're going to start with public comments, so anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited during this session to two minutes. Public comments will be limited to a total of 45 minutes, but may be extended by over the Board of Education. So just to give everybody where we're limiting our comments tonight so that the Board has time to discuss the two topics that were put out, since we only have an hour and a half before a regular meeting starts. So that's why it's limited to 45 minutes, and we'll just call as you come up. We just want to make everybody aware of that.
That's part of the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. What brought this thing?
Okay, with the regular. Alright, so anybody wishing to address the Board?
So I'm Brian Okavah, 235 Mountain Side Drive. And I want to talk a little bit about the House Bill 99 and just prepare something really quick on social media studies. So while I have many reasons to be in opposition to teachers carrying firearms, it seems most pertinent to me that you should ask schoolteachers and students and find out if this is an appropriate response to the increase in total shootings in our nation. As I see it, the function of the school board is to provide oversight and support for both students and teachers to both learn and teach in the most nurturing and effective environment. So in response to House Bill 99, I should consult educators and student educators and student teachers. In 2018, 73% of teachers surveyed said they were in opposition to carrying teachers and carry guns in school. Additionally, that 73%, of that 73%, 63% were strongly opposed to the proposal. When asked which specific measures would be most effective at preventing school shootings, 57% of them favored universal background checks. Another survey out of California State University that posted similar findings, teachers in all states were interviewed, and one of the states with the most respondents was Ohio. And in the survey, the overwhelming majority said that 95.3% do not believe teachers should bear responsibility protecting students by carrying guns in classrooms. Of all the gun owners surveyed, 70% were in opposition to armed teachers despite their own... So of 70% surveyed, they were gun owners, and many even themselves said that they were in opposition to gun ownership. Finally, another survey funded by the Department of Justice said the student who made towards armed teachers were...
I'm sorry. Time is up.
My point is that we should ask the teachers and the students if the Board is going to go on, and we need to address that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Wachia Knowles. I'm the one who sent you the presentation regarding responsive classroom. I'm a first grade teacher at Parkside. First, I would like to open my time up to answer any questions about the slideshow or anything that any of you had.
I really appreciate that. I thought it was really insightful, at least just to kind of get a glimpse into how you feel like it benefits your classroom. So I appreciate that.
I first learned, I mean, I could sit here and talk and talk about the merits and the benefits of responsive classroom. I first learned it as a career switcher at John Carroll in the 90s. They were using it in their collegiate classrooms as well as into the things, and they did a lot of the same thing where they explained it to us, then they said, "Go out and see it." And that's what we do as educators. One thing that I brought tonight, since there are no questions, was, you know, again, I could talk about it for hours, and I've often done that, but let's hear it from kids. This was from a six-year-old. He's now going into fifth grade, and when I asked the parents if I may use this, I have it hanging in my room, but this is something their grandparents have. And she just wanted me to reiterate how important it was not only to the child, but to the entire family. We did a poetry unit as part of our curriculum, and he wrote this. At the beginning of the year, we make a classroom family poster, so we hold each other accountable to get to our hopes and dreams that we have discovered, which is all part of responsive classroom. And that poster's up all year. And it says, "When you walk in your classroom, you think of your family. That moment inside your body, a warm feeling. What's loved to be a friend, and you can get better at stuff and be who you want to be." And so their whole family has this. A six-year-old wrote this. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Laura Fox, third grade teacher at Riverview, speaking on behalf of RLEA and my fellow colleagues on responsive classroom. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Riverside Board Office members and anyone else from the district departments that were involved in adopting and training the teachers for responsive classroom. For those of you unaware, responsive classroom is an evidence-based, student-centered, social, emotional, learning, and behavioral management system. It consists of a morning message, greeting, sharing, and a game along with modeling expected behaviors. This program trained our staff to have an effective, safe, and respectful structure in the classroom and building. It allows us to teach. I have been trained in responsive classroom twice in two different districts and implemented it in my classroom the last seven years. Any school district that didn't require it, I put it in my classroom anyway. It's what teachers call a game team, a game changer. I love RC so much, it's so much, I in fact made it my number one goal on my GPP plan. The data showed that RC had a positive effect demonstrating less interruptions due to the use of a chime that students respond to effectively. Here's a glimpse of my experience. Last year, my student clientele was made of best friends that did anything and everything together throughout the week and weekend. They played the same sports, dance classes, so on. Every day, the conversations from those events carried into the classroom. With my responsive classroom toolbox, those problems diminished because they were included in the morning meeting sharing time. Each student was able to say good morning to their best friend, be a greeter, receive a greeting. Each voice was valued and respected. Each student was noticed by eye contact. Each student felt like they belonged every morning, and they mattered. Secondly, each year, we had students that were extremely sensory-based, students who cannot make eye contact or say hello, students who have triggers that will set them in a different mood. And to end it, because I'm going to be cut short, there was a student who was able to not do those things, and he, at the end of the year, or one of the games that we played, he turned to me and said, "Mrs. Fox, I get it now. I understand why we're not supposed to make fun of people." And he was a very extremely sensory-based student, so...
Thank you. Any other public comment?
So I'm surprised to see that you're going into a public comment right at the very beginning here today, but I just want to say that, you know, of course, you're going to bring the teachers in here and say that this is something that it isn't, okay? What the parents that are against critical race theory and social-emotional learning are those Marxist and divisive ideologies that we're talking about. So you can parade all the teachers you want up here that are going to tell you, "Oh, this is great, and this is wonderful," okay? What the parents are against is the divisive components of this and the fact that you're wrapping this up like a wolf in sheep's clothing, okay? We don't want critical race theory in this school. We don't want these divisive kinds of things, okay? Step back from that. That's what we're telling you, very loud and very clearly, okay? And if you'd like to see a couple hundred people here talking against it, we'll bring them. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
I wasn't planning on talking. Just here to support my daughter, but I definitely want folks to know, I want this Board to know. We've watched a lot of videos of how the Board meetings have gone, and there seems to be a lot of internet-based conspiracy theory-type stuff being talked about constantly. And I just wanted you to know that there are people in the school district who don't think that way, who would like other perspectives to be brought in as well. So, and I'm not saying anything negative about anybody, but things around social-emotional learning and CRT isn't taught anywhere. But there are things to, you know, try to understand what is good and can be better in our school system. So there are parents out there, as well as teachers, who think these are good methods.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name for us?
Chris Solon.
Thank you.
Do you need an address?
If you want to do that.
992 Double Beach Cove.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, I just called on him. I apologize.
John Music, Painting Township. I have a question, you know? I do my homework, and I look at, people say, "Oh, we got this information." Look at where you got the information. What is the source? Do your homework on the source, and what agenda do they have? It's like I've talked about, the OSBA, the NSBA, and now we've got the COSSBA. Look at the source where you're getting this information. Just because you get it from one of those sources doesn't mean it's good that this is what the people want here at Riverside. So I'd say, the five of you, like I said before, the buck stops with you, and the thing about what happens and what doesn't happen here at Riverside is all sitting at your table right there. So I'm just saying, look at the source where you're getting the information. I've called all of them. I've even called the union. And the thing about, the thing about is, I've called them all and talked to them. I personally have been in the union for over 30 years, and I've called various physicians in the union. And the thing about it is, I also was managing, so I saw both sides of that. So what I am saying is, when it comes to looking at all these different groups to get information, it's the five of you to do your homework to say, "Okay, this is something we really want here at Riverside." Just because it comes from the COS, any of them, any of the organizations, just like the NSBA, we all know about that letter and so forth and so forth. That's kind of what we stand for. Thank you.
Adrian Bickerstaff, I teach at Buckeye, and I work with the special ed population who, they don't get a chance to show what they can do academically. So when they're in the meetings in the morning, those kids are able to participate, and that's when they enjoy that. So I would hate to see that go, because you're thinking that, I'm not even sure where CRT is coming. I don't, nobody has explained to me what you think is being taught that's related to CRT. Every time I ask, nobody can tell me. I mean, it's a word that's out here because somebody made it popular, and it's a buzzword, but nobody's teaching that in elementary. So I mean, if you can tell me what it is, I really would like to know, and I'm not being funny about it, I'm so serious. Because you're saying this, and teachers are starting to question, "Well, can I teach about Martin Luther King? Can I teach about Ruby Bridges?" I mean, what can we teach? What can we not teach? Tell me what it is. That's what I want to know. Who can answer that?
We'll have discussion here in a minute, and Mike can answer your question.
I would like to hear an answer to what it looks like.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm sorry, Neil. What is your name?
Adrian Bickerstaff. Do you need my address?
No, no. No, I just wanted your name, I didn't hear it.
Any other public comment? Alright, so we'll move to the Board discussion. So I guess then I'll just remind everybody the two topics that we need to discuss here at the table. The first one, again, was three questions, three moves, responsive classroom, professional development from what we're doing today. So we'll start with that one.
So I have a presentation, if you give one to Gary as well. And then I have enough for the board and for Jim. So I don't know if, you know, how many of you know my background, so I'm going to start off just to show that I have a long history with Riverside. Graduated 40 years ago this year, class of '82, and this is a legacy of that. This past weekend, I hung out with three other classmates playing golf. So I have a lot of good memories from Riverside, a lot of good experiences, a good start to life in Riverside. I was elected to the Board in 2011, took office in January of 2012, so been in office going in my 11th year. So we've gone through a lot. We've gone through a lot. So when I first got on the Board, it looks like many of you are probably young, probably don't remember this, you may not have been with us at that time is what I'm trying to say. But the first thing we did was we cut 15% from our budget because we were overextended. So imagine not having a whole lot of experience, coming in and having to cut the budget 15%, having to take away specials, having to take away pay-to-play, or having to put in pay-to-play. After that, frankly, we had some issues with employment issues, some of you may recall. So for a period of time, we had some issues with that. Luckily, we worked together, we worked that out, but again, it was a pretty tumultuous time. And then we moved into doing some infrastructure improvements. We were fortunate enough to pass a levy that allowed for two new elementary schools to be built, which is a huge undertaking by the Board and particularly the administration. Obviously, there were things that you needed to do, you were affected as well. Then, as soon as we get those done, we have COVID, right? We have the coronavirus that comes in, right? So in the 11 years, what I'm trying to drive home, the 11 years that I've been on the Board, I have, we've all worked as a team, and we've gone through hard times, and we've come out on top, right? We have worked together, we have been together, we have sacrificed together, and we have done good things for the district. So you may wonder why the stink, what's next, right? So who knows what's going on? So what's next? I need to, I need to set the stage, because I really do believe that we have a problem with public education that needs to be addressed. And I want to set the stage to kind of, at least set some guidelines and some perspectives that may be helpful in establishing this dialogue, because ultimately, we're going to have to work together to preserve public education moving forward. So if you would, so what I did is, well, I, you know, this isn't just, you know, random opinion. I have The Righteous Mind by Jonathan Haidt, some of you may be familiar with him, he's a psychologist. The Devil's Pleasure Palace by Michael Walsh, not an academic study, but an excellent study on critical race theory and its origins. Got the Constitution. Have The Colleen of the American Mind, also by Jonathan Haidt and Griguny Janov, talking about the issues that we confront today. All books I've read multiple times. I, you know, so I take my role on the Board very seriously, I try to get up to speed. I, it's not just, you know, I see something on the internet, and I say, "Oh, well, this may be it." This is substantial work, and so I come at it from a perspective. And then really, we have two different worldviews that are in play. So this is the Communist Manifesto, and this is the Bible. So let's go in order. So Jonathan Haidt is a PhD psychologist, and I'll try to put it in a nutshell, because I don't want to take too much time, but although this is going to be lengthy. What he did is, he did research into moral values, and he was able to determine that there were six different kind of domains of values. There's care-harm, fairness-cheating, liberty-oppression, loyalty-betrayal, authority-supervision, or, excuse me, authority-subversion, and sanctity and degradation. So those are the six domains that are out there that he identified. Again, a PhD, an expert, okay? And his hypothesis was that all political cultures and movements are based upon these. So there's a, this is a fairly long book, there's a lot of good detail in here, I encourage you all to maybe take a look at this or read about it. But one part of his experiment was this. He took 2,000 people of mixed political views, left, independent, and conservative, and they were broken down, one-third into three different groups. So each group was equal in size. One-third of the time, they were asked to answer the questions asked themselves. So if you were on the right, here are the questions, and you answer as yourself. Same for independents and people on the left. One-third of the time, they were asked to answer as if they were the typical leftist, and one-third of the time, they were asked to answer if they were the typical conservative. So what were the results of that, right? Because it's a pretty interesting experiment. How do people, when they think about other people's perspective, what do they think? How accurate are they in understanding what other people believe? So who were the best at predicting how their political opposites would answer the survey? Conservatives and independents were consistently the best at predicting how people with other moral views would answer the questions. Leftists were worse at predicting how people with other moral views would answer, they assumed the worst about conservatives. What really is happening, these are, here's a, this is a poor, you know, I did the best I could, but this is a poor representation. This is a picture, you can't see it, I will give this to Mr. Flacco, you can put it online. But this is a representation of the typical liberal/ leftist matrix, alright? And the takeaway here is that liberals and leftists really only have three domains that they focus on: care-harm, liberty-oppression, and fairness. The other areas, the loyalty, the authority, the sanctity, not a part of their story. This is, and again, this is from the book, this is not my reconstruction, this is from the book. Conservatives have a moral basis in all of the areas. Conservatives understand fairness and harm, but they also understand authority, loyalty, and sanctity, as well as liberty. So right here, we have a problem, in my opinion. And that's why I think that we need to figure out how to work together to save, to save public education, because a lot of the people, please, if I may, a lot of the people who are, we're all in this together, right? Everybody funds public education, whether you're left, independent, or right. And here we are in a situation where I don't think that everybody's hearing each other, right? And I think that, again, Jonathan Haidt, PhD, has pointed this out, that there's a problem, that certain characteristics of people are not listening to one another, okay? So here's why I think this next slide is important. And the next slide is a representation of the, this is from 2018, Democrat to Republican ratios by academic field, okay? And you wonder, so this, I think this is pretty descriptive. So it starts out with engineering, where there are 1.6 Democrats per Republican, and works its way down through chemistry and progressive order, history 17 to 1, biology 20 to 1, you get down to sociology 43, obviously 44 to 1. You get to anthropology and communications, there are literally no Republicans in this sample size. And so it doesn't have education in here as an academic field, I'm not sure why, but it doesn't. But if you average all these up, the average across all of them is 26.4 Democrats to one Republican, okay? So here's a quote from the study, and I've got the link here. Indeed, faculty political affiliations at 39% of the colleges in my sample, which were top-two liberal arts colleges, are Republican-free, having zero Republicans. The political registration in most of the remaining 61, with a few important exceptions, is slightly more than 0%, but nevertheless awkwardly skewed against Republican affiliation and in favor of Democrat affiliation. Thus, 78.2% of the academic departments in my sample have either zero Republicans or so few it makes no difference. We've got a problem. You may think that, you know, I'm some yokel sitting on the Board, don't know what I'm talking about. This is a problem. This is, we don't have trust because we don't have inclusion, a word that is very popular these days. We don't have diversity of thought in education. That's a problem. We don't have diversity of engagement, and that is a problem. If we want to save public education, we need that. We need all sides at the table having a voice. So here's the next question. Can we save public education? I know you can't see this, but that's what it says. So I, as I said earlier, I am a product of Riverside Schools, graduated in '82. So believe it or not, back when Lammouth was called Auburn Road Junior High School, I was in a class, and I have no idea why this stuck with me. But as an aside, a teacher, just randomly, I can't remember the context of it, but kind of randomly put up a different diagram of politics, right? Most people think of the horizontal bar, right? The right on the right, the left on the left, and the middle in the middle. But he said, "No, there are other people as well, it's a circle, right? It's a circle diagram." And you've got the totalitarian folks at the top, communists and fascists. You're working your way down, I have done some things, but you work your way down to the realm where you can talk about representative republic, which is what we live in, right? And how to gauge the, you know, where people are at on the spectrum, right? So again, I will make this available if anybody's interested, but here's what it looks like, I know it's a long-distance view. But you may ask, you know, "What are you doing, Tom, putting communists and fascists together?" Well, you know, communists and fascists actually have a whole lot in common. They believe in the state over the individual, no freedom of speech or thought, no freedom of religion, the state is God, and ideology over truth. Are they different, right? They're not exactly the same, right? We had Nazis, we had fascists, although Stalin did sign the non-aggression pact with Stalin, so, or excuse me, with Hitler. So, you know, are they really that different? The difference between them is that fascists believe in the government singularity based on nationality or race, and the communists believe on getting there based on government utopia, the government utopia via class. So one is nation-based, nationality-based or race-based, the other is class-based. That's the difference fundamentally between a communist and a fascist. So you go down below, so I do have the do-not-cross line, which I'll talk about in a minute. I have, again, just for descriptions, I have liberal over here and conservative over here. I have them both under the do-not-cross line. So why are liberals and conservatives together, right? We, you know, liberals and conservatives have hated each other for a long time, right? Think of all the races. Things have gotten worse, certainly, I think most of us would agree with that, but even think back to the 50s and the 60s and earlier times, there's always been tension between these two, and yet I have them both below the line. Why is that? Because frankly, liberals and conservatives have a whole lot in common. What they have in common is they believe in America, they believe in freedom of speech, the individual over the state, Judeo-Christian principles, objective truth, freedom of religion, and a belief in capitalism. So all those discussions that we had, all those loggerheads that we had, we still have fundamentally fundamental agreement on what America was about and where we were headed as a country. We had different views on how to get there, but we were all together, right? So what are the differences? So obviously, we've hated each other, right? You know, in a political sense. So what are the differences? So conservatives believe on getting to representative government, again, which is what we have based on meritocracy and limited government power. And liberals believe in getting there based on government is a force for good, and that equal opportunity is important. It's not that conservatives don't believe in equal opportunity, or that liberals don't believe in meritocracy, but it's what they believe the most, right? It's what they have most faith in. So that's the ranker. So what's the do-not-cross line? And I didn't describe this fully. So at the very bottom, so you have communists and fascists at the top, at the very bottom, you have a line that talks about libertarian, libertarian, extremely limited government. So they're definitely on the opposite end, and then at the very bottom, you have anarchy, no government. So what's the do-not-cross line? The do-not-cross line is the line that you go over when you take away the fundamental principles that support a republic. You take away the common values, you take away the freedom of speech. You take away the freedom of religion, and you take away capitalism, and you take away the individual. So that's the do-not-cross line. And that's something we're going to talk a little bit more about, or like to talk a little bit more about. Okay? So that takes us up to, you might be saying, "Well, what's this have to do with SEL?" And that's a good question. So what does it have to do with SEL? SEL has some positive things, right? We've heard multiple teachers give positive reports about SEL, but I don't think that we are thinking about it in a critical enough light. Education is trending, right? So you can't just take a snapshot today and say that's the way it's going to be 10 years from now. What's next? What's next with SEL? And you can find out a whole heck of a lot more. You can go to marxist.org. I talked about, and information I sent to the board and to the members of the administration. I talked about, a lot about the books. I gave references. So you can smirk if you'd like, but you need to learn. You need to understand.
Trust me, I am one of the least woke people here. I am conservative.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm really not interested right now in your comments. Actually, afterwards, I'm ready to address your questions.
We want to let, again, public comments on, so just to keep us on track, so Mr.
So the bottom line is this, is that there's going to be a bait and switch. You talk about, you know, be nice, don't make fun of people, but this is the problem, is that you're going to, the next switch is going to be, if you make fun of people who are LGBTQ, then you are unacceptable. They're going to shift the focus of the values and what they promote. And what, well, here's a reference. I have two things for you to ponder. This is from AEI, the American Enterprise Institute. And I will say this, you know, there is no literature from academia against SEL. In my view, the reason there is no literature against SEL is because you're in an echo chamber. There is no, there's no other opinion. You are in an echo chamber, and you are listening to one another, and you're not getting any other opinions. But here's from AEI. "Before 2020, SEL was a broadly bipartisan enterprise. What happened? Well, because in 2020, Castle infused SEL with CRT-aligned ideology. SEL 1.0, as we would call it, focused on morality, neutral student competencies such as self-awareness and self-management. Back in 2019, it struck me as an unsustainable enterprise, a morally free attempt at moral education. In 2020, those world competencies became valuating, with values derived from the left academic ideology, popularly known as CRT. Castle embraced this ideology shift under the name of transformative SEL." Okay? Now, you can discount this if you wish, because it's not quote-unquote academic, but I will tell you that you don't have, I don't believe that you have the tools to critically look at this, to critically think about what's going on with SEL. I agree that there are some positive aspects to SEL, because you've said it, you've experienced it, but it's never static. What's the next step? What's the next shoe to drop? This is the next shoe to drop. It's going to be, you can only be kind and nice and good if you frankly accept the CRT guidelines on morality, which are frankly based on ultimately the Marxist, the Communist Manifesto. So next up, the other point I would make, I don't know how many of you are aware, but we currently have a stay, but the USDA, yes, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, has put out a decree basically that says that if you have money that you are giving for poor students to help feed them during classes, that if you want to maintain that, you will have gender-neutral bathrooms.
I'm sorry, I just want to stop a second. Because again, our question today is, there's a lot of information, right? I understand.
You bet.
But our question today is about what requests to remove responsive classrooms. So I think we just need to stay focused on this.
So let me justify what I've gotten on this panel. It's because SEL may not be, you know, on the surface, there may not be issue. You need to go behind and look at what's going on. You can't take a snapshot, and I'm telling you that there are things coming down the pipe that are going to affect us. This is not a static situation, and there's a next step. So we need to be prepared, if we're going to be reasonable board members and do our job and be prepared for what's next, we need to understand that. This is critical information.
So I'm listening to all this, and, you know, I'm not here to preach about morality or values. I'm not here to talk about Republican versus Democrat. I'm not here to talk about conservative versus liberal, just people. Just people who don't understand one another, who don't communicate, who are afraid to communicate because they don't, because they're not comfortable with it. And, you know, I've been through some trainings and listened to things, and fear is, in my opinion, is what prohibits change and creates strife, that the conversations that make you the most uncomfortable are probably the conversations that will create the most change. And while we may have some uncomfortable conversations, I think they're necessary, but change is good, and change is where we have been headed. And I'm proud of the change that we are making in our classrooms to make young people responsive to what it is that they will experience out in the real world. And I have a couple of other things. So like I said, I believe that uncomfortable conversations will drive change. I believe that the practice of inclusion is what makes people feel valued and that they're able to contribute. And thank goodness for our teachers who are doing that in their classrooms every single day. It just makes me really emotional, sorry. Thank you. That the more you know about individuals, the more you break down implicit bias and create equity in our society, which is so needed. It makes me sad that our society can't see that.
I'm sorry.
And one more thing, that not everyone is hearing one another, and that it means more to have open and honest communication. And that's why responsive classroom is absolutely necessary in our classrooms, in our jobs, in our world, everywhere, not just here. It's not about education, it's about society and how we work with one another.
Thank you for your comments. I'm glad that we're having a discussion. But change, change is not necessarily good. Change is inevitable, progress is optional, right? Change is going to happen, but progress is not guaranteed. And I will tell you that if we get away from the founding principles of the United States, which is on the individual, we are going to end up in tyranny, is where we're heading right now. So you've talked about, again, Mrs. Krasinski, we need to expand the conversation. We've been waiting for a long time. What's next? So what happens if the stay goes away? Are we comfortable collectively with having non-gender-based bathrooms?
I would like to say, I think it was not what Dan said. Not at all. I read it.
So there's a stay on it, and that, if you look at the article...
It was about athletics.
If you look at it, there's a stay on it, and there was an article that described it as well. Okay? So you're welcome to your own opinion, but it's coming on. It's coming here. We have a district next door to us that has preferred pronouns, not required, but optional. Are we going to have transgender in sports? Do we believe? Are you feminists?
I don't disagree. We're going to have a lot of tough conversations over the next few years, and I think we have to tackle each one of those as we, as they come down the pike. In regards to responsive classroom, I did a lot of research myself, and the one thing I did ask for that I could not receive was what is that professional development specifically is that? And I did not get a response to that. And I'm sorry, when I go and I hear the teachers telling me that it's working, their kids are engaged, that they're learning, and everything that I found on it, I looked for nonpartisan. Even though we're nonpartisan, I should not have to go and look liberal or conservative. I shouldn't have to do that. We're nonpartisan, we should be thinking that way, and we should be making sure that our kids are learning, all kids are learning. And I'm not seeing that. And I think the other things, as I calm down, we'll have to talk about them, and it's going to be very difficult discussions. And just because the school next to us is having to deal with those, it doesn't mean it's going to come to us. It may, it may not, and I think we have to tackle them as they come.
Are we looking at shutting down this discussion right now, or are we looking at continuing?
Well, I think in regards to this question that you asked us, to remove responsive classroom professional development, I don't know. I'm personally, I think we keep it. I think we continue to do what we're doing. We're seeing positive results.
But I mean, right now, are we open to further discussion and information, or are you looking to shut this down?
This work session was written in regards to responsive classroom, the specific question that you asked. If you want to bring up something under new business and start a different discussion, I think we do that.
I'm looking at talking about responsive classroom. I'm asking, are you trying to shut that down right now?
No, I'm not. I'm just...
Okay, so I have something I want to add. I thought you were interrupting, saying, "Okay, we need to stop."
Well, no, I'm saying that we're not talking about...
He wants you to address your question.
He asked me a question, so I'm responding to him. What I'm saying is we're not talking about the bathrooms or anything like that. We're talking about responsive classroom. I want to make sure that we have a chance to speak about that.
Okay. And so in the training manual, and I'm assuming the teachers went through the whole training manual, right? And there was a question asked at the last meeting that I couldn't get an answer to, and it was, "What does as much as mean? Is it more than, less than, or equal to?" And I think that's a pretty simple answer. As much as means equal to, right? Can all agree on that. So in the training, what it says is that they want the teachers to spend as much time on SEL as academics. Did you see that in the training?
No, we're not doing that. But we started... I'm going to ask Dr. Malakar to respond, please, real quick.
Okay, hold on, hold on. I'm not finished yet.
Will you ask the question?
And I'm not asking Dr. Malakar a question. I'm talking with the teachers right now. And so I'm making a statement, and a question is in the middle of that statement, and maybe that question should just be looked at as rhetorical, okay, instead of being interrupted. So as much as, and I just heard someone say, "Well, we're not doing that." Well, the training says you're to do that. The question is, why are you not doing that? And also, the training says that you, as much as you know your student, you are supposed to know the student's families. Have you gotten to know each of your student's families? The mother, the father, the brothers, the sister, the grandmother? And so have all the teachers gotten to know each of their student's families? Okay? So what I would suggest is that if there is a teacher or a few teachers that have done that, it's going to be the great minority, and that's not being done. Because it's my understanding, the teachers as a union have a contract, and at a certain time of the day, at the end of the day, they're done, and they're not required to go beyond that. Nothing can force them to do that, and it's a contract. So when is, when do you take the time to meet each of the student's families? Do you do that during the class day? Do you go to their homes? Do you invite them into the classrooms? Okay? And so are you leaving the school to go to their homes during the class day? And so how are you getting to know, because as much as is a very serious statement, okay? How are you getting to know each of your student's families as requested and required by the training, in the training manual? Okay? So I'm just suggesting that there are things in there that are next to impossible to accomplish, okay? And that being said, the responsive classroom website will tell us very clearly, anyone that goes on there can see it, it's equity, 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 equity. I also asked a question at the last meeting, what is the definition of equity? And I didn't get an answer on that either. Okay? Well, some people look at equity as equal opportunity. Well, that's not the truth, okay? Equity means that everyone has the same outcome, okay? And the goal of Marxism is to socialize the people, okay, and have equity. And what that means, just like in Shaker Heights, when they removed an AP math class this year because the lower students were not able to achieve the higher scores, they just removed the class altogether, okay? That means the upper-performing students do not have any longer the opportunity to take that class. Okay? It was suggested to me by people that had no idea what they were talking about, that it was because Shaker Heights maybe didn't have the money or the teachers to do it. That is not the case, okay? And at Shaker Heights, and I can tell you, because we have a friend that has taught there for 20 years, the same thing happened over there with their rides program. It came in at a very low, innocent level, and now it's full-blown, and it's a major problem. It is so bad over there, the kids are basically running the asylum. The fights, the violence, the disrespect for the teachers, and the teachers are not backed up by the administration to do anything about it. Okay? So it starts as a very innocent thing, and then it continues to grow and grow and grow. There's another facet to this, which is gathering information on everybody. And part of the growth of the program, if you will, will be to gather information and have files on every student. Okay? So how do you create a file? Well, when the teachers are required to make notes, you're creating a file, okay? When those notes are done on computers, those computers aren't locked up to where only you see them. The people that own those computers actually sell that information in many cases, and sometimes even internationally, okay? So you might not be aware of that, but it's just like Facebook and Google. Okay? How do they make money? Well, they make money because we're the product. They sell our information to companies that want to sell things to us, but it's a whole other topic. Okay? So when we are creating information on students, it becomes a file which can follow them through their whole lives. That's dangerous, because it can harm those kids. It can harm them when they get older, especially if something is in there that someone wrote that's not favorable to that student, and somehow a potential employer gets a hold of that, it can be harmful. So anyway, when you're looking at what's best for the student, okay? Well, basically, reading, writing, and arithmetic, okay, is best for the student. And when we are saying we need to spend as much time on SEL as academics, we are taking time away from the three Rs, okay? In my mind, that's not healthy. That's very dangerous, and it's heading us in the wrong direction, especially since over the decades, the United States has gone down, 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 down compared to the world in testing, test scores, okay? And so when we look at Riverside specifically, I'm the chair of the curriculum committee, and I'm looking to make some improvements, especially in the math area where we've declined some, and so I'm looking at opportunities as to how we can do that, okay? But that's a very, very small area. If you look at it globally, we would like our scores to stop declining. Let's arrest that and start increasing those. Well, that means we need to spend more time on academics. So if we're spending the time on socializing the kids, we may believe that that makes some kids' lives better, and it's very well made. But when you're looking at all of the students, we're not then giving the opportunity to all of the students that should be available to them. And I also suggested in a presentation to the curriculum committee that teachers are not therapists. How many teachers have psychology degrees? Well, I would suggest that probably not very many. So then, they're not qualified to be therapists. So as teachers become therapists and are writing therapeutical statements in a kid's file, in a student's file, I think it becomes outside of what should be acceptable. I'm not going to go to a carpenter to get my eyes fixed, okay? So, you know, we have general rules and guidelines, and we do hire people specifically with specific degrees to teach specific things. And I think that we're off on the wrong track when responsive classroom says that the teachers are supposed to be therapists. Another item that's in there, one of the items in the responsive classroom training is, and this, again, is a small item, but I'm just going to put it out there. It says that if a student, a child, is confused and doesn't know the answer, their training is that that student's supposed to figure it out themselves. It's right in the writing, and you may have seen it if you've gone through the whole training. So I could talk for hours about this, but those are highlights.
So can you tell me where at in the book it says both of those things, as far as a teacher being a therapist and the kid doesn't know the answer?
Well, it's in the training book. You can find it.
I couldn't find it, and that's why I asked. So I've been through this multiple times.
It's not in that core, it's in the training manual.
Is there another manual with Dr. Malakar?
Yes, there's a training.
So I didn't write my course. I think Dr. Kales has that.
So, I did write my course, I think Dr. Kales has that.
And while Superintendent Kales is looking for that, what I would also suggest is this, I believe anytime we do something differently in the schools, we should be telling the parents. We're supposed to be an open society. I specifically asked, first, last year, I wasn't on the board then, but when the board purchased the product and the training occurred, parents were not notified. When the training had completed and the program implemented, parents were not notified. Today, parents have not been notified. Nobody. Not one parent has been notified by email, by the superintendent. Therefore, I had asked Superintendent Kales if he would notify all the parents that we have in the district brought in a social-emotional learning program called Responsive Classroom, and he said, no, he would not do it. Why are we hiding the information from the parents?
Yeah, I don't think we're hiding it. I think we're having discussions about it, it's out here very open.
Has there been an email that went out to all the parents?
We never requested it. We've never done that, and we've never requested it.
So, it needs to be requested?
Well, we don't know that.
When we bring in something new, and this is a ma, I mean, this is $130,000, $140,000 we spent, that's a major change, we should be, well, let's go back to, let's go back to the Bonlevy vote. How many communications were sent from the school to all the parents?
So, let's step back a second.
Was that requested by the parents to be done?
No, we, we as a board, so you are one person on the board.
We, as a board, voted on that to send out all those notifications?
We, as a board, three to two voted that we were going to put it on the ballot, so they sent communication with information, that's...
Okay, but my question is, did we, as a board, request that the school send out all these communications to the parents?
Yes, by vote.
We did not vote on that specifically.
By vote of the board, that was the implicit, you know, instruction is that they won't do that.
Right, so, following that thinking, when we've spent $130,000, $140,000 on something, it would be logical to go ahead and inform the parents.
We've done many things like that through the years, and we don't send out emails on everything we do. Especially for professional development. And it's discussed here at the board table, so that was on the agenda, it's available to everybody, it's public record.
No one knows about it.
But, but it's like, it's here, we're not hiding it.
I'm going to tell you, parents do not know about this. So, if we, as a board, are operating that way, that it's available to people and it was discussed, I'm going to tell you, there was not much discussion, it was a rubber-stamp vote, I watched the meeting.
It was discussed in the curriculum committee, which you are now the chair of, and that's where new things should come in and be discussed.
President Knessy, last year, last year in April, when it was voted on to purchase the program, there was almost no discussion in the meeting, it was brought up as a line item and approved.
Because of how we...
The public would have no idea what it was.
Because of how we handle it, we have committees, we have a committee chair, at that time, it was, no, there was really no chair.
Mr. Miley.
So, Mr. Miley was our committee chair, Mr. Axe sat on it, it was discussed at the committee meeting. The role of the committee is to bring that information back in with any concerns, anything we need to know about, so that we can have a discussion about it. So, that's how it is done, it's how it's been done. If there's something with the committees and the way we operate, that's a whole nother discussion, but that's what we do.
Okay, so, what you're saying is, it's not the school's responsibility, unless they're directed by the curriculum committee, not a board vote, but the curriculum committee to send out that communication.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, how would the communication get sent out?
What I am saying is, we have never sent any communication out about professional development at this time. Would anyone disagree with that? There was no request by the board saying, hey, we need to send a communication out, so the administration would not send a communication out, all right? When the teachers sit down, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember sitting in an elementary classroom not too long ago, the teacher sits down and they tell us, we're going to do circle time, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, this is how our day is structured. So, as a parent, I know how my day is structured. The things we're using, morning meeting, it's just like circle time, it's always been used.
Could you please explain that again? When the teacher says we're doing circle time, you know how your day is structured?
On oper, so, when, as a parent, sorry, as a parent, when I would go in for orientation to meet with a teacher, the first thing they do is they sit down and they tell us, here's how your child's day is going to be structured, here's what your child's going to be learning. Because this is only K through eight, so it's not high school, okay? That teacher tells us that. As a parent, if I'm concerned that my child is going to participate in a morning meeting that teaches them how to greet somebody, teaches them how to say hello, teaches them how to have a discussion, I need to say something.
Okay, I think we're into a minute, little portion of SEL and Responsive Classroom.
But that's what we're teaching.
I mean, we're talking about one small item, and so, I'm talking about the local program of Responsive Classroom. And so, all I'm saying is, as a board, our responsibility should be to inform the parents what we're doing in the district. And I'm saying we failed to do that. Can we now, as a board, agree to inform all the parents that we have a social-emotional learning program that we have brought in and has been implemented into the school program?
So, we have social-emotional professional development, where teachers are using certain tools that help their classroom engage, right?
I am not, I don't know at this point that there's a reason to send out raw communication, personally.
But why not? So, you're still denying...
I'm not denying anything, Mr. Fisher.
I mean, you don't want to send out a communication.
I'm all for it, there's a reason. As a parent in the district, I'm really going to send communications.
We talked about this before, though, too, that we cannot get in this head. We inundate our parents already with information all the time. I'll tell you, I haven't had an opportunity to talk about this yet, but Mr. Fisher said something that, about hiring professionals. We do hire professionals. We hire teachers with degrees, we hire administrators with doctorates. They give us these recommendations based on years of training and years of education. My job, I work at Lake Erie College, but I'm not a faculty member, you work in the roofing industry, you work in, we all work in different worlds, it doesn't make us, like, I should know if you've made the decision on this. Dr. Malakor is our director of curriculum, we pay her as a director of curriculum, she has a doctorate. These people do this for a job, and they are telling us that it is hugely beneficial for their classroom. I would never take from them, ever. And I think the fact that we're sitting here and actually having to talk about it for this, all the entirety, is ridiculous. And yes, when we talk about it, we're going to end it, we talked about this, the reason we're doing this today was because once we come to a decision, we have to finish talking about it and say how we each feel about this, and then it goes three, two, five, zero, four, one, whatever. We can't talk about this every single month. We cannot, because we are getting sidetracked from all the other really great things we should be working on, instead of allowing our teachers to do their job and trust that they're doing their job, because that's what we hire them for. We hire them because they are professionals. These two are professionals.
I agree with that, but I'd also say this, that our job, as a board, is to be a sanity check, all right? And what do I mean by that? Would anybody in this room outsource, whether or not we go to war, to the Department of Defense? Would anybody? Would anybody? No, of course not. You would have, you have, you have the politically elected body, the president, as commander-in-chief. It is not the military that decides when we go to war, it's a sanity check. Do we outsource policing? Do we let police do whatever they want in order to protect us? The answer is no. They could, if they want security, they can put a checkpoint at every single intersection in Concord, or Paintsville Township, or wherever. The point is, there is a check, there is a sanity check on everybody's domain. There needs to be a sanity check in education as well, and I know that many people are unhappy with what I have said, but I am telling you, if we're going to save public education, you need to engage with people, you need to read things that you don't normally read. We need to, we need to come together. I was going to suggest that I want to, I want to save education, that's why I went through the litany of all the things that I have done for the district, my history with the district, my commitment to the success of Riverside, right? I think The Coddling of the American Mind would be a great book for us to commonly read and understand what's going on, because there's a lot of things going on that frankly, social media and other things are totally disrupting American life. They talk about that here, we need to talk about those things. There's a, one of the things I had asked the members of the board to look at is something called The Creepy Line. If you have access to Amazon Prime Video, I suggest you view it, it's about an hour and a half, and it talks about what Google is doing in taking information and manipulating it, storing profiles, everybody kind of smirked, I, let me just take that back. Some people were surprised at Mr. Fisher's comment regarding Google and what have you. You need to understand, you are being profiled. Everybody who uses it is being profiled. Our students are being profiled. You, as staff, when you use Google and you use Chromebooks, you're being profiled. There are things that we could band together with to increase the circle of inclusion in trying to save American education, starting with Riverside, and I would like to be a part of that. But we've got to figure out a common ground, and I would suggest that, and that I will not, I will not ever vote again to approve acquisition of Chromebooks, because it is absolutely the wrong answer. And I recommend, you may disagree with me, but I'm sure the vast majority of you or many of you have, Amazon Prime, I would look at The Creepy Line and see if it doesn't change your mind.
So, I would just like to ask what all this has to do with the social-emotional learning program that we're using. I'm not exactly sure I'm following this line of thought for myself, I'm confused. But I'd like, I'd like to answer a question from Mr. Fisher when he asked about equality and equity, and if I can maybe give an example, because it was an example that struck me, and it meant something to me. So, you have three people, and one is five foot, and one is six foot, and one is seven foot, and you have a fence that is eight feet, and they all want to look over the fence, okay? But the person who is seven feet, he only needs, you give everybody a one-foot step, well, one person can now look over the fence and the other two can't. Well, at the end of the day, that's equality. That would be equality. But equity is the fact that I get three steps, and now I can see over the fence as much as the guy who was one, needed one step to look over the fence, okay? That is equity. And when I look at equity in our district, and I look at what teachers do in their classrooms, and I've been around for a long time here, and was on, you know, the DLT and whatever that we had here, and I remember talking about the third grade reading guarantee when that, you know, that came out, and how much, how much teachers had to give some students more than others in order to get them to be able to read, is that wrong? That's what we're supposed to do in our classrooms. We're supposed to be reaching students where they are and where they need to be in order to be successful in this thing called life. That's equity. And if somebody has a problem with equity, when you look at it in that term, man, I've got a problem with you. Like, at the end of the day, I'm just going to be honest, like, that is, honestly.
So, I'm sorry, real quick, I, we just, we have also Health School 99, so...
I'm going to shut, do we have?
I have, Howard.
Okay, so, I'd like to make one more statement. So, you said you're confused about the SEL, so, maybe I could wrap up what I'm saying like this.
I'm confused about where all this Google and tracking, and like, how all that has to play.
Okay, okay, fine, and so, just to be clear, so that everyone here, and anyone watching, and anyone who will ever hear or see this, I think that we have a really strong district in the Riverside local school district. I think we have a lot of very, very good teachers, and I believe we have a lot of good staff and administration. I think we have a very good district, okay? My goal is to make it the gold standard, I think we have work to get there, and I believe that the social-emotional learning programs, as it continues on, would cause us to decline. So, that being said, that's an opinion. So, that being said, the social-emotional learning program of Responsive Classroom was put out to K through eight and for the training for the teachers therein. Okay, so, how is this program being measured? What is the metric? Because as I understand it, teachers can pick and choose, like an à la carte, whatever they want to do or not do. So, if a program cannot be measured, it can't be managed, okay? Because you don't have consistency. Who's doing what? This teacher's doing this, this teacher's doing something else. Well, how do you meld that together and measure that? What is the tool, the measurement tool, that we are going to use to measure this program? Okay? So, I think that we don't have one right now, I think we're deficient in that, and I think that will cause us to have failure, because if you don't have some consistency, if you can't measure something, you can't measure it, you can't assess whether it's working, not working, or excelling. Okay? So, I just wanted to put that out there. I think that it's a program that has unfair requirements of the teachers and of the staff and administration as support, and the as much as getting to know each of the students' families, I'm about 99.9% sure that is not happening. And the as much as, if you know the student this much, well, you see that student every day, and it's impossible to see their families every day. Okay? As much as teaching them or doing the SEL program, as much as academics, well, that's taking away from academics. So, I'll wrap it up that way.
I would...
So, in my opinion, it should be removed.
I would sort of beg to disagree with you that we don't have measurements of success in classrooms. We, at our K through eight, we have test scores, and it is my understanding that you go from the district to the building to the teacher-based teams, that they communicate with one another about best practices, and there's lots of data that Dr. Malakor will take about students' test scores, and they have those conversations. Why is this classroom kids doing so much better, for example? And then they talk about, what are you doing in your classroom? And they share, they share those best practices. What are you doing in your classroom that's making, that's making it work for your students? So, we do have data. So, to say we don't have data on what is working in classrooms and what is not, I think is not accurate.
Well, I'd like to see a report of that data, on the Responsive Classroom data, Ms. Malakor, if you could get that to me.
I don't think it's on Responsive Classroom, I think it's just what practices are you doing, what is it? And it could be a bunch of things in combination, it may not be any one thing, but you may listen to another teacher say, I do this, and I do this, and I do this, well, I do this one, I don't do these other two, maybe I should try them, I don't know, like, I'm not in a classroom, but...
Because it's professional development, it's meant to help them in their classroom to do things better. It's not a curriculum that we're removing, it's not a curriculum that we can...
And we promote, we promote.
It's to help make everyone better.
The communication.
Exactly, yes.
Well, I'm genuinely interested in that data.
I don't think there exists.
It's not...
I just heard that there was data.
On how the classroom is doing. So, I think you're trying to kind of turn what was said, it's on how the classroom is doing, it's on how the teacher groups are doing.
One classroom or all the classrooms?
We have, I mean, every classroom takes tests, there are state-required tests, there are reading tests, there's all kinds of tests that kids take that will measure their success, and many times, you can use that data to determine, like, what practices is this teacher using? And you have that conversation, I have no idea what this teacher may be using, let's find out what is making that teacher successful.
So, is that, could that be written down so we have a template? I mean, there has to be something you can measure.
Oh, my gosh, there's so much data that they have in the teacher-based teams that they have documented all that, I mean...
So, there has to be one way to measure, just like two plus two is the same through all the classrooms.
So, real quick, I'm...
So, there has to be a template, a measurement tool we can use to measure the success of the program, and I'd like to see that.
Okay, so, we have another whole topic to discuss, can we sign that at a curriculum meeting, because I guess you can explore if there's a way to measure it?
So, let me, if I may, just in conclusion, it is, if we are going to have public education thrive, people like Mr. Fisher and I, we need to be, we need to have an inclusion in the conversation, we need to work together to figure out how to make it work for everyone. There's, you, you know, maybe it was too much information, maybe you just disagreed, but we talk past each other, and Jonathan Haidt, I think, understands why that is, and there are a lot of things going on that The Coddling of the American Mind touches on and is relevant to everything that we do in this district. And I know, I don't know, Ms. Vassi, if you saw The Creepy Line? Did you watch The Creepy Line? I would recommend that all of you watch The Creepy Line, because you may have different opinion on whether or not Google is good for you. You have access to it, it's about an hour and a half, and I'm sorry that you didn't watch it, because it may have changed your mind as well. And I provided that, you know, two weeks ago. It is important, we have got to come together, we, I am flashing red, because we are in a dangerous situation, we need to work together to recover. I want to be a part of that, I'm not being, I am, I am trying to bring things forward that I don't believe you see, and it is important that we have lights flashing in all directions so that we can see what's going on. I am dedicated to Riverside, I want it to succeed, we have got to work together. Thank you.
And don't call us fascists. So, real quick, just to close this conversation, the question that was asked...
Let's talk afterwards, let's talk afterwards.
So, real quick, the question that was asked of the board was to say, are we going So, real quick, the question that was asked of the board was to say, are we going to remove Responsive Classroom Professional Development? I can say that my, where I stand right now is that we continue to use it and let the teachers use the tools.
I agree. I would like to see it continue with classroom.
I'd as well.
Are we going to take a vote?
There's really nothing to vote on? There's no resolution?
Sure there is. We'd like to hear your votes to be a vote.
We just said, we would like to keep Responsive Classroom.
There's no voting to be a vote.
It's not, it's not, there's no vote on it. Excuse me.
Vote on it.
There is nothing to vote on.
What are you having it from?
We're all on it. We have a record. Public participation is over and we're moving on to the next subject of House Bill 99. Our teachers...
It's over, man, it's over. It's over. I mean, it's over.
It's what I'm saying. We decided to keep it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All right. The next question was, should we change current policy to allow school employees to carry a gun, which was signed into by Governor DeWine? I think, Dr. Kales, you have had some conversations, you can just provide a some information from the teachers' union.
Well, I received an inform to the boards, two emails that represent the stance from the RBA, our teacher union, and also OCP, their association of all school employees, which take up our non-certified or non-licensed employees. And both have suggested that they will not support having our staff bring weapons or guns in schools for the purpose of protection. I also asked other school districts what they're doing too. It doesn't seem like any school districts, at least in the immediate area, looking to harm their teachers.
I know, I had a chance, I spoke to some officers that I know. One of their main concerns, which I had not originally thought of, so I'm glad I talked to them, was when you have somebody who is not in uniform walking around a school with a gun during an active situation, they said it's very hard to understand who's the shooter, who's not the shooter, you know, what is going on. And I thought that was something very valid that I personally hadn't thought of. And anybody that I spoke to also, kind of just understanding opinions or not in favor of it.
I would like to make a recommendation or suggestion to the board as well, in connection with several of the last committees, is the fact that we, all this was strongly about school security and safety, that maybe we can work with the Sheriff's Department to see if we can get a deputy in one of our schools. Right now, we have one SRO, soon they have two. They have different training than some of the deputies that work at the door here. We have also a deputy at Loom. But with the new SRO, talking to the Sheriff's Department, likely we had SRO in some of our elementary schools as well. With that being said, our school district is pretty large. And the way things are going in this country in terms of frequency of these biomechs, that I believe we should pursue putting a deputy in each of the schools. One of the things the board also did was we increased the pay for the person at the door. Also, we're hiring them on our books, not on the Sheriff's Department, and also providing benefits, which make this a little bit more appealing than what it has been since 1998 when we started having a person work outside the door. There are other things we're doing as well. I've spoken to a couple of board members, is trying to shore up some of our safety protocols. On August 9th, we have an architectural firm coming in to walk some of the buildings that we think need attention, one being Riverside Campus Entry, also Melbridge and Buckeye. And looking at what those best...
City of Atlanta.
And, well, yeah, Loom too, that one's a little bit easier when we're talking about Mr. Fishel and I were talking about that, but also Loom. But we already have a deputy there, but we're looking at securing the entrance way. And Loom's weapons and guests, like I said before, it's not that we don't believe we need security, we do. But there's so many other things that happen in school that one might think that having many weapons in school, even if it's by a person that is going to train, although I do think that twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours is not enough. I believe that there's some things that could happen regrettably in the distance in schools because of proximity and the number of the days.
So I have some comments as well, I mean. So I called down to OSBA and spoke to a gentleman by the name of Will Schwartz, apparently part of security. Asked him, you know, if he knew how many districts already had, you know, basically armed teachers. He did not have that information, but he was able to forward to me some information on districts that do have armed teachers. The first district I called does not match our profile, they were...
Sorry, can I...
Sure.
Armed teachers and/or staff.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, so it's not just teachers.
That's a fair correction. So that's armed personnel in the school, is a better way of saying it, thank you.
Well, because I mean, sometimes the teachers say, look, it's all on us and it's not.
It's not, that's a great correction, thank you. So armed employees in the school, how about that? Okay? So not our profile, small district, we're all concerned about getting response time, thirty-plus minutes. They, it made sense, in my opinion, right? In that circumstance. Talked to another district which pretty well matches our profile. Thirty-seven hundred students, seven different buildings, more of a suburban setting than a rural setting. And what they did was, I thought, unique, which is a derivation, a derivative of what we have been talking about. They have an emergency response team. And what they do is, the only person who knows all the members, the members know who they are. The only person outside of the response team that knows who they are is the superintendent. Nobody, or members don't know, nobody else knows. What they do is they're not armed. Throughout each of the buildings, there are bio safes, bio-controlled safes. So a thumbprint, I don't know what it is, but in some biometric that opens the safe. In that safe are the weapons that would be used in such a scenario. And as was brought up, how do you differentiate between, you know, good actors and bad actors in such a situation? In that safe as well is our vests, ballistic vests, that are, that have some code on it to identify them as good guys. And in addition to that, they do regular training with their local police department on a consistent basis. So it is a different, there's nobody walking around constantly with a weapon, but they have that as a backup. And this is my background, is IT, information technology and project management. And what do you do with security in a system? You do it in layers. You might have a password up front, but you want to get to another module, you need a card with a chip. You want to get to another module further in, you do biometric. You have it in layers. You may all, we're all familiar with Uvalde. There's no failsafe, right? We had armed, there were armed personnel outside that door, outside that classroom for an hour before they acted, and by then, it was clearly too late. There's no, if, there is no way to guarantee safety. But what if there was a biometric safe in that classroom? Maybe the outcome would have been slightly different, would have been completely different. The other thing in Parkland, there's a, which happened a number of years ago down in Florida, the SRO is, has been indicted and is actually on trial for his, for potential dereliction of duty. There is no outcome, so we don't know what the status is. But security in layers is something I think we need to consider. And not walking, you know, having kind of a hybrid of having availability, but not necessarily being armed throughout the day, I think is something we need to consider. And I guarantee you, in a hot situation, each of you, regardless of your opinion of this, would certainly wish that you had, that somebody near you was armed. So in the heat of the moment, this is, it's an abstract thought today. So I think we know where we are, but I throw that out there because having security in layers makes sense, in my opinion, and needs to have further discussion.
I agree. Additional discussion being, what can we do to improve this school's security? Like, so the walkthrough and understanding, if there's any suggestions and where they would start, I think is absolutely appropriate.
Oh, I would add a similar comment to what Mr. Hack said. If the person in the classroom had been armed with a firearm, the question, rhetorical question, is would more students have died or fewer students have died? I think we all know the answer to that. Because if someone had a deterrent in that room, at the very least, even if the person was totally freaked out and couldn't follow their training very well, just pulled out that gun and shot towards the perpetrator, that perpetrator almost in every situation would have fled, at least from that scene. And so, I put that out there and then what Mr. Hack said, I think, makes a lot of sense for people that are fearing that, a lot of people really fear that guns are walking around in a building. Having them locked up in a safe and biometrically available, it's not immediate. The recent case in Indiana where a guy pulled out a gun, started shooting into a crowd of people and someone who had a concealed carry within fifteen seconds pulled that gun because they had it on their person and killed that perpetrator and saved a lot of lives. Okay, so if we were in a no-gun zone, a lot of people would have died. And so, this is a separate item, you may not agree with this, I'm just going to put it out there. I've heard the studies. And since we've been giving kids, people psychotropic drugs, basically starting in about the eighties, we know that it has a negative effect on the brain and a certain number of people lose their minds literally. And now we're seeing a lot of this. When we go back, however far you want to go back, cowboys and Indians or whatever, people were carrying guns everywhere, we didn't have this problem. But I don't know if you would tie it together, I think there's a little bit of a link with the drugs that we're giving kids. And I think that it changes people's brains in certain instances. And sometimes people can't handle it and they literally lose their minds and do crazy things. So anyway, it's, we're in an environment where that's not going to change. And so what, how do we respond? How do we protect the kids and in ourselves? And so, I just put that out there as a proponent of at least some additional safety measures. And I think that was a good idea.
Dr. Kales, let me make sure I understand this correctly. So in order to have this in our schools, we would have to vote on it as a board? To approve that amongst many other things, usually as a board, you don't take that up for consideration unless the administration is a proponent of that or somebody from the board requests and they're asking to put two people that want to put that on the agenda. So as I'm understanding it, you would prefer as the administration not to have the board vote on that?
The staff.
Correct. And the staff, right? But at this point in time, if any two board members would like to have that, they can do so, but then we would have to vote. So right now, like, we don't have it because we're not voting on that.
Of the area of schools, I believe, so, I don't know for sure, but the area of schools aren't exercising any type of resolution at all. We just keep in status quo, so call us and says, no weapons in school. I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think, matter of fact, we talked to them and said it was recommended that a resolution regarding not exercising the authority under House Bill 99 be approved. I don't know if they actually did that. They acknowledge the fact that it should be, 99 is out there, they're saying not to exercise it.
I believe it's a requirement from the bill itself that if you do approve it, that you have to make a public announcement. I believe it is neutral, it says nothing about not doing anything.
I think the guidelines were sent to us on June 22nd from Dan, our legal counsel. He has six items to consider with this House Bill 99. I got it here.
He's in there, yes. Yeah, the way I understood it from talking to Dr. Hartman, Mr. McIntyre also, is the only thing we need to do is if we want to put a resolution on to adopt something, that's when you put it on. If not, we're just not changing anything.
I think the conversation's over, is what I would say.
So we're not making any changes at this point? I don't have to bring this special, this work session to a close, correct?
It is now one thing to revisit and reset.
Right, so we have five minutes if anybody needs to take a quick break before we actually start our regular board meeting at seven, so. Can I call you, you call roll?
Lori Misskey.
Here.
Tom Mack.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Belinda Gracy.
Here.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Can we stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, America, and in whose sole liberty and justice are our own.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested committee members since tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in the public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. Our first, and a business approval of minutes, the June 30th, 2022 board minutes. Did I get a second? Any discussion? Mr. Flacco, can you call roll?
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Belinda Gracy.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Misskey.
Aye. Motion, Carrie. Next is special reports.
Unless, Mr. Flacco, we have a special report, I do not.
No special reports tonight?
That might be a first.
Right, so next is old business. I did not have any, oh, we do have one piece of old business and that is our facilities discussion. We are trying to find the date. And after a lot of confusion, I wanted to throw out, we have that discussion before the next board meeting in conjunction with our, I think, our board self-evaluation. So our next meeting is the day, first day of school, August 25th, right? Really, you're doing 5:30 again? I think, is 5:30 good? I'm okay with that if everybody agrees.
Fine for me.
Fine. Mr. Flacco?
That was for me. And this is for facilities.
Yeah, we'll do support self-evaluation, which I think will be pretty quick. You know, just add a few pieces to that and then we can do the facilities discussion.
Well, the one thing that we did want to do though with that, remember you and I, I think we talked about it briefly, that Mr. Hack and I had a phone call with OSBA about the school board member handbook. And so, we were supposed to begin that first draft of it soon and we were going to present it actually to the board at the next meeting hopefully. So I don't know if it'd be...
You want, we're going to, as a new, wouldn't go business?
Well, I guess I was just thinking that, well, we've been, old business, we've been talking about this handbook. But I guess my point was, would it be beneficial to wait for the board's self-evaluation until September to have the opportunity to present the handbook that we're still waiting to get from OSBA and have the opportunity to reflect on that?
And then create what we need to self-evaluate or something?
Yeah, because they actually provide one, right, Tom? In the handbook.
So they said three weeks and there was what, was it last week or was it two weeks ago?
I think it was two weeks. As time runs together.
It may be that we get that draft handbook this coming week.
Right, because you and I, it was, it was a run.
It was something like on Tuesday, maybe?
It was on the 18th, so ten days ago. Monday the 18th, we had a call.
Are you suggesting presenting draft for us during the next board meeting on August 25th and then postpone our great net evaluation till the September?
I feel like we would just kind of all go better together and that, that'd be my opinion. It'd give us the opportunity to present the handbook and, because you and I were going to talk about being a policy committee meeting on the agenda, you know.
I think that that would be a reasonable way forward. It would be, they're very related.
Right. And I think that too, in all fairness, I'd like to give facilities our full attention to that.
So, working session before the next board meeting on August 25th at 5:30 to continue our discussion on the facilities. Okay with that?
Yeah, I defer to...
And then a self-evaluation to the next one. Yes. For administration. Thank you.
Carrie, can you, can you amend the invitation?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Any other old business?
I just wanted to toss out there that I saw, I thought I saw six new buses out in the parking lot. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the bill was referred to a few months ago, using two different brands on the state of Alabama. It was part of the UK.
So it's part of the old business, they have arrived.
Right. It's always good to tell great new buses.
Good job by Mr. Flacco executing that whole program.
Any other old business? Any new business? All right, so that brings us to our Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. So first one is our Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison, which is myself. There is no update at this time.
Ms. Purnas, I just add one thing, new business, just a short statement. Mr. Weiss and I are inventorying all the classrooms and lavatories and other rooms. And we probably have two more days of doing that will be completed. Mr. Weiss, having an engineering background, is looking...
Mr. Weiss, having an engineering background, is looking at putting together a report. So, we should be done with that whole, well, at least looking at the rooms next week and then however long it takes to put together that report. That'll just help in moving forward and knowing what we have. And we know a lot of what needs done, but we're gonna have more information as we move forward into our renovation project. And when we were in the building yesterday, we had a nice conversation with Superintendent Kaelis and he alluded to that earlier. A little bit about safety issues and possibilities and opportunities in that regard. And we had a nice discussion about that, about 45 minutes, and so that was good. And just wanted to note, Ms. Westbrook, we had a conversation, she's interested in... That she's excited moving into her new position and I just wanted to say it was a nice conversation. And again, seeing people, especially Ms. Westbrook, you know, excited about, you know, a new opportunity in the school. And I think that's great and wonderful, I just wanted to say that, so.
Right, so getting back to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. So, again, Superintendent's Business Advisory, at this point, there's no update on any kind of, on the report. The next one is Mr. Fishel, who is Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association.
So, we had an Alumni Association meeting in July 11th. And a lot of this is repeating what has been going on with the Alumni Association. And they would like everyone that had ever gone to Riverside to please join, be a lifelong member. They keep saying that, so we're looking for new members. The golf outing is September 24th at Painswell Country Club. They're looking for people to be involved in golfing, maybe getting a foursome together and also maybe possibly a little bit of sponsorship. And then there's also a duck race and, you know, that I believe is in October. And that's really, the Alumni Association had a boat in the party in the park, the three-day event that just occurred. And to have a presence and maybe sell some duck race ducks and opportunities and also T-shirts and just interact with the community. So, that's it for the alumni. And as far as curriculum, again, just looking forward to an opportunity. I know there's a program in place to gather some more information, that's gonna take another year. Looking for an opportunity maybe to look at a way to improve some of our scores, especially in math. So, I'm putting that out to the community, I'm focused on that and hopefully we can, we can find a way to improve our situation with those scores.
Was there, I'm sorry, I can write down, was there a curriculum meeting there?
Not, we have another curriculum meeting scheduled, so there's one coming up, so nothing to report on a previous meeting.
All right, Mr. Hagg, Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison update.
So, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met on July 18th. And we did get an update on various things that are going on for, with the summer work and things are coming along. I've not seen the final product, for example, of the Cafeteria in John R., but that work is moved along. And I did, I think I saw something along the way that said it was basically done, maybe still curing. There was progress made on the floors in Buckeye. Just very quickly, they're grinding the floors down to basically the original surface. The new sealant they're putting on, as long as you maintain it, in certain ways, it's supposed to last literally forever. So, I guess we'll find out. And if it works at Buckeye, then it'll be applied elsewhere, including at the campus where all our floors are terraced as well. There's some work in the kitchens and what have you. There is some other, they went through the alarms, the fire alarms and things like that, making sure that they all worked and that you could hear them throughout the building, so that's apparently an annual requirement and everything checked out. And the other thing is they, as part of that effort, the... I think it's really more fire rather than police, but the fire, the fire needs to be notified within two minutes of the panel being pulled. And that was, that occurred, so we're in compliance and looking good. We did fire extinguishers. The, you know, one thing that's been a continuing story has been the boiler at the Loom. And we originally thought that the boiler was going to be complete, the new boilers were gonna be installed by the end of this month. Unfortunately, they ran into supply chain issues and so that, that project has been delayed and they anticipated it being done by the end of August. You know, there's always concern, I believe that, I think we have enough lead time. I don't think we're gonna have any issues going into the fall and cold weather at this point. But we are in a situation where we're not able to complete the, that aspect on the original schedule. We also had a pretty extensive conversation on the athletic fields. Those of you who are familiar with our baseball program know that our baseball fields apparently have much to be desired. I've never played, never played baseball at Riverside, so I'm less familiar with the fields. But they need some improvement. We talked about some different options, potentially going down the path, it's kind of hypothetical at this point. But that is something that needs to be on the, on the, on the docket and on the radar going down the place. We, you know, we have, by working together, Dr. Kaelis leading the way, we have a terrific field and stadium. And now, we need to make sure that the rest of the facilities are on the same par as the stadium. So, I, there's some other things as well and I'll turn over to Mrs. Grassi here shortly in case I missed anything. But the big thing that Mr. Arlesik passed out is a spreadsheet that covers all of the major systems in all the buildings. And he rated them as critical, critical meaning that, you know, work could be done today, fair, fair, basically in a maintenance, in a maintenance program, but have a shorter timeline and then good, which he categorized as three-plus years. So, that will be useful information as we go into our facilities discussion in August. And we can talk about that, he'll be able to expand. He's not here because he is actually at his daughter's wedding. So, we should all wish the happy bride and groom soon-to-be a good luck and...
Married yesterday?
Oh, he got married yesterday, well, terrific.
Do you have that, like a digital copy?
We do, we do.
I can also share digitally, but that's a hard time.
It's just peeking, it's really small.
It does. So, that's it. And Mrs. Grassi, you were there as well, did I miss anything important?
The only thing that I, that really wasn't on the agenda, but we talked about putting out a request, an R Q for owner's rep services for the district so that we can have some representation on our behalf to give us some construction knowledge and experience as we're trying to go through some of these projects or things that we are thinking about, what they would see as critical and whatnot. So, that's actually on the agenda today, correct? Or are you, actually, we've already put, we've put it out.
It's already been put out, so we put it out, this is an essence of time. We released it on July 20th, it was advertised in the Public Notices section. The construction firms all pick those up, timed ahead and several of the些建s who expressed interest. Statement of qualifications are due on August 5th. We set aside some time on August 9th to introduce some of those firms. Input we have, we're gonna do with Buildings and Grounds, we're gonna have a hand with anything on what kind of response we get. If possible, we might have something ready for, for November 20th, which is very important as well. So, we'll kind of address it as we go along. We have a couple of firms,些建s, to kind of clarify what we're looking for, what kind of project we're taking, which obviously is still to be determined. Kind of the initial guidance on how this should be.
All right, Mrs. Harden, Policy Committee for Post-Organization?
Yeah, so, like I said, Mr. Hagg and I need to get a policy meeting on the agenda for August prior to our next board meeting. I don't know, Tom, if you just want to have emails sent between you and Chuck since he's not here today, I'll probably send without knowing him.
Can you set a due? Oh, just kidding.
I mean, I can. Well, I'll not be able to give the answer on it correctly at all either, but take from the three of us, right? And then, the biggest thing, I was here today at 6:30, unfortunately, I missed the meeting, but today was the first meeting of Riverside PTA. I believe I saw it at 6:30, is that right?
It was the second meeting and I think it was six, six, seven.
Right, so, we missed that, but there was another meeting at the High School PTA, so it's exciting to see that they're continuing to meet, get some stuff going for the high school. And that's it right now.
Thank you. That brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Obviously, there's a lot of things going on in the summer, well, we don't have kids in the building. The partners are busy getting the buildings ready for the start of the school year. Transportation, looking out and out, seeing the buses ready. And there's some questions we received over the course of the summer, is anything about bus stops or even about schedules? So, before I start with my presentation, Melissa's gonna talk a little bit about this here.
So, there may be some question about when schedules will be released, always at this time of year that talk starts. High school schedules are ready to go, they can't be rolled over and released until summer school closes. So, at the first, probably around the first week of next month, high school schedules should be released. Within the first to second week, Loom's schedules will be released and then elementary schedules, teachers, which is really what elementary parents and students are worried about, will be released the Friday before school starts. So, we just wanted everybody to know and that's kind of be out there, that's when schedules will be available for access.
Thanks.
That's it.
I'm here to view the Board of enrollment update and I wanted to point out a few things. My sheet is loaded up all over. So, I wanted to go through each of the buildings real quick and give the board an idea of where we are in terms of increases and decreases. So, the difficult part about this though is that the numbers are so fluid in the kindergarten area that it's difficult to tell you whether or not it's gonna look like this in a month. But I can tell you though is, the numbers that you see up there will probably increase because we don't have all of our kindergartners registered. And for example, if you look at kindergarten registration as it sits right now, we have 203 registered. Well, we have 328 kindergartners on June 3rd, which is our last day of instruction. But if you look at Buckeye, first grade, projected first grade this year is 75. Last year, we had 61, so that is an increase. We also had 58 last year, if you follow along with the second grade at Buckeye. So, it was an increase. 61 last year and 61 so far this year for an even number. 39 and 66 in fourth grade, which is an increase. And then, fifth grade, 52 last year, 40 this year.
Sorry, Jim, in fourth grade, you said how many?
39 last year, 66 this year. Now, that, and out of all the grades, you have one that's even and then you have others, three others that have increased and one that decreased and you would think, well, boy, we're up to the group. Well, really, the difference right now is 343 last year as opposed to 345 this year, for an increase of difference of two. The thing we have to realize though is the kindergarten numbers again, smoothing up. Last year, okay, we had 72 kids, or sorry, we had 72 and this year, so far, kindergarten, we have 38. Melbridge, again, we have 57 in first grade last year, 43 projected, which is a decrease. 41 last year, the second grade increased. Third grade is 48, a slight decrease of one student. Last year, we had 38 in fourth grade, an increase. And then, 47 last year and 44 projected this year for a decrease. The difference between the total enrollment in Melbridge from last year to this year is only 10 students. And not too much of a difference in the kindergarten. Last year, we had 40 and now, we have 34 projected. So, the numbers are pretty stable there. Parkside, first grade, we had 93 last year, 106 this year so far, for an increase. 88 last year in second grade, for an increase from 97. Third grade, 81 last year, this year is projected at 94 for an increase. Fourth grade, 88 last year, I'm sorry, 88 last year, 86 this year, slight decrease. 68 last year and 90 students projected this year. Last year's total enrollment in the building was 534 on the last day of school and right now, we have 517, so a difference of 17 students. But again, kindergarten numbers, we had 99 last year and we have 61 registered this year. So, not too bad, pretty stable. River View, the big, one of the bigger numbers is the fact that we had 7, we have 70 projected in kindergarten and we had 117 last year. We actually had five sections compared to the kindergarten. We had 76 first graders last year, we have 122 this year. Second grade, 117 last year, 77 projected this year. Third grade, 111 last year, 117 projected this year. 91 last year for fourth grade, projected 111. And fifth grade, 92 last year and projected 97 this year. If you look at the numbers, last year in June, we had 604, right now, we have projected 594, a difference of 10 students. But again, the kindergarten numbers might change that. Okay, so the total, if you look at all the enrollment, the elementary schools, last year, we had 1735. We are projected this year, 1754. Again, that's probably a change, again, to the eighth time we've had a figure now. Sixth grade, Little Loom, we had 300 last year, we have 267 projected this year. Seventh grade, 306 last year, 309 projected this year. And if you go to the eighth grade, the high school's pretty stable as well. We have a decline in eighth grade slightly, 346 to 320. Ninth grade, 363 to 348, those are the two grades that are declining. The remaining grades increased slightly. Tenth grade, it was 362 last year, projected this year is 365. Eleventh grade, 358, projected 365. And 12th grade, 348 last year, a correction of 356. It's only a decrease of total of 23 students thus far. The district total right now is 4,084, last year was 4,256, for a difference of 172 students. But if you're looking at it, the difference of 125 students from kindergarten, last day of school, to projected of 203. So, we could figure probably another 100, 150 kids missing that. So, I think we'll be pretty close to being the same, close to the same.
Just to confirm, so we're, we are, again, no open enrollment at this time?
No new open enrollment.
No new open enrollment. Are we seeing growth, like, we mean, like, were there's development in our district? Like, is it impacting all schools or specific schools?
I, it probably will outlive my time here, but River View in the next couple of years is gonna be on a problem because of the developments, certainly happening in that area.
What about the new ones out by...
You need to start thinking about it, you start coming up with another plan and moving forward.
Then what about out by Parkside, I mean, there's a lot of development going on there too.
There is. I believe that there's gonna be more in the new area in the next few years. It'll become an issue where not only are we looking to, you know, possibly renovate the high school, but what the board will do about the enrollment in some of our elementary schools. We can re-district probably a little bit, but it's not really gonna do a whole heck of a lot for us because if you look at the numbers at Oak County, Melbridge, they're actually not gonna be... You know, we're talking about 22 students in a classroom down there, they don't wanna be too high and they have a major difference in the classroom.
So, have you gotten any further information as to when they plan on breaking ground? Because they've had a lot of different thoughts, discussions and different kinds of plans as to what they're gonna do, how long it's gonna take. Because the last I heard, they're planning on spreading that out over 10 years, that new development.
I...
And part of that's county infrastructure?
Yeah, I, and I didn't get it straight from the horse's mouth, but I thought that they were gonna start doing things in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Over there. I know they're in the development stage, but they were in the development stage when we bought the property behind Madison before we built. I had a discussion with Mr. Settle, who owns that property back there. And he assured me back then that someday there's going to be sewer over there, and by golly, I think he's right, you know, especially with the community. It's not too many people know, we don't have sewer. Still, at Riverview, it's, it's built the same way as Parkside. And I can say Parkside more than we have two large homes.
Right now, there's not a we go with that.
No. That's right. All right, so strategic plan update. Central office administrators, Matt McCann and Lisa, our facilitators on July 15th. We discussed the next steps and strategic plan, which includes meeting with all building administrators and directors. How many gave you the scaled-down version of what we're going to do in each of these scheduled meetings? On August 11th, the board proof plan will be reviewed in detail with central office administrators, buildings, and district directors. Mentioned some of the administrators had more to do with nuts and bolts in building this plan than some of our other administrators. We will discuss how, if any, current action steps might serve well into the next plan. Like I said, it's a new plan, but we want to, we don't want to, we want to make sure that some of our efforts aren't repeated. And some of the action steps that we took in the previous plan, if they're still working for us, we'll look at them and just update what we're doing.
This is something, and maybe Mallory's better at like for this, but will we bring in new staff members, whether they're teachers or design analysts? Are we reviewing our strategic plan with all our new hires?
We're going over the culture playbook. We can talk a little bit more, we have new entire orientation coming up on the 16th with teachers, so it's to kind of update the slideshow if we can, and see what information we can put in.
Is that the one page that we're putting out something down?
We're going to also look at how to move forward with establishing action teams for each goal of the strategic plan. We actually do have new people, all stakeholders together, to look at the plan and how we're going to move forward in this charting as it is. So number 27, we have Dean from NTO to draw the central office administration discussing progress and creating the action teams. Who are on the action teams? What are the expectations of the group? Where and how often meetings should take place in terms of the time commitment? It also seems like in the past, when we asked people to come and help, some of the same people over and over again, they wanted to step up. We want to make sure that people are going to commit to this, that they do have the time to commit to help the district out. Also, communication expectations still to stay forward as well. October 19th, meetings from 9:30 to 12, it'll be central office administration, buildings, principals, and directors, action teams as well, determining how we are going to measure our progress and how do we intend to update our staff and process. And in January, we're going to review the data that we collected, the goals and the communication. And in May, we're going to do an end of the year review of how far we got, we described some of the goals and timelines. As we progress with this process, I will update the board as well. Last couple of meetings have been, we had the line of arguments, but you know, we did have, we're hoping to use it as a roadmap and determine how this is going to look like we should do.
Isn't he there on the website? I'm going to have to look to see if it's out there already or not yet.
It is. Yeah, well, there you go, don't you? Open it up, for goodness sakes.
So.
Whatever, whatever.
All right, thank you.
I'm just kidding, Alan.
Next slide.
Yes.
All right, Riverside Job Fair. We hosted our first job fair on July 19th, kind of targeted to us by job seekers. You know, inasmuch as we've been complaining to the board that we can't find people to work, complaining we haven't hit us anywhere, so Mallory, ALEF, our executive director, and our other administrators got together and put a plan together to have our own job fair. And it was done a few things, like I said. We had 34 individuals attend, submitted applications, all classified, the partners were represented, and not individuals with the applicants. In other words, we had tables set up with the directors there interviewing people that were just coming in. It was, you didn't have to schedule a meeting, you just show up, and there were tables with signs, if you're interested, you'd say food service, they'd go to the food service, custard yellow, mayonnaise, you know, or both, you know, the types of vendors. It was done very, very well. We also had a transportation department offer live school bus driving demos in the parking lot. I got over there, and we were one of the drive a bus, I did.
Somebody got you.
She was talking about that I drove the bus, it was so cool.
That's so fun.
That'd be so scary.
That was awesome.
Y'all did a great job on that.
I've always admired the bus drivers for being able to handle those, especially in bad weather and naturally in our district. Back on the board, we had a little problems with issues or accidents over the years, so.
How many people did you hire from this job?
Right now, we have one, but we have running some others.
Yes, we're putting them kind of through the next step process, background checks references. So we'll get there, hope to at least, my guess is going to be at least a dozen little slots that we cut open, and we got a lot of responses just for general substitutes too.
Perfect.
We're thinking about possibly doing this again, maybe next semester, maybe junior, to share all the talent that goes with this.
That's great.
All right. We have community kindness days, Thursday, August 4th. There's not, you know, info here other than the fact that we're having that on August 4th. As most of you know, or you participated in, you go throughout the community for a while, there's, you meet in the acts of random kindness, and it's a lot of fun, and you all have Riverside shirt on, we think it continues to support other students. We also have a backpack fund. Oh, come on.
Yeah, do you want to get those? So, so Matt Parsons, who, he has, there's a group of them that graduated together, that started this fund, I want to say maybe two years ago. They have a memorial scholarship in memory of Emily Ringler, but they also collect, and they get donations, they buy backpacks. He came in and talked, it was either last year or the year before. So they're continuing the work. Their supply drop will be on August 13th. Oh, and, and so, Nick, I'm assuming you got these specifics, because I did not have them. Hazel Township Park at 10:30 a.m., Tractor Supply Company over there on Menory Avenue at noon, and then Morley Library at 2:30. They'll be in the Riverside bus, so we do as a district provide that to them, to be able to distribute the supplies, and then anyone who needs them will get a backpack. And the backpacks are full of school supplies. So if kids come up, families come up, they can get a backpack from the bus on August 13th. It's a really good organization, the kids super proud of what they're doing, and they carried it forward because they all are starting to graduate from college now and move out. In fact, that's why Matt's not here to speak tonight, because he's not in Cajun right now, and one of the other, I don't know, kids. Kids emailed me and said, I can't be there tonight, so I will speak on behalf of them. So anyone who wants to either donate or may need a backpack, you can reach out, I know they're on Twitter, or you can email them.
August 17th at 7 o'clock, we have the youth kids night at Riverside Stadium, where we introduce the fall athletes and coaches. We also have a performance by our greats there, Riverside veterans. We're also giving a special recognition to a couple of students. One is Antonio Botigie, who's a junior this year, is coming here. He qualified for the state wrestling tournament. And also Julia Hickson, who was going to be a senior this year. She was a state champ in the Para 50 freestyle of swimming, and also the Para 100 backstroke. She was a state champion, she was actually a repeat state champion in the 100 backstroke. So we're going to recognize them in that program. So we're very proud of those two, and they should be proud of themselves as well. And finally, we have the community tailgate, August 19th from 4 to 7, behind Riverside Campus prior to the home opener against Perry. There's a couple of things I want to talk about with athletics, some of the things you may have read in the paper, and it's just some other pieces of information. We are in the process of updating our sports schedules on the district website. We don't have Kim McDonald anymore, she finally decided to retire. I just wanted to give a, just a short shout out to her for all that she's done to support the athletic program for the last couple of years. She's been hard to replace, but we have Camille Zandros that will be coming and helping out. She's actually leaping her, is a teaching position to take on the role as assistant director of that class. And she's maybe already in some work. There's a newspaper article as well, from the New Serail, a lot of referees wanting to increase pay this fall, not only for football, but for volleyball and soccer, and, it wasn't across country. But the issue that we're having right now is, if you look at area conferences in northeast Ohio, most of them are paying between $75 and $80 per contest with our referee. We'll use football as an example, they have five nuts in wrestling football. The WRC is actually, I believe, the lowest in this area. We spend, we pay $65 for the WRC. Now, the way I understand it is the referees want to pay $100 per contest. And I'm not sure what other school districts are doing, but they know that that's probably that where they happen. So now they've developed a plan where, it's a six-year plan, where in the first two years, they'll get a minimum of $80 per contest for the first two years, this year and next year. And then after that, in years three and four, $90, and then $100 in the fifth and sixth year. There was some discussion too, that possibly there was going to be a boycott in the first season, or whatever that. Anyone that I've talked to that's involved with schools, and we're not going to let a few dollars get in the way of having a sports season, and see the things, it's not that much of a difference. We've got to catch up everywhere in the WRC. Even our, even our lower, our level ones, our JV and freshman, right now, we spent $45 for JV and we pay $40 for freshman. So.
Is it stuff by your conference?
What's that?
Is that stuff by the conference?
So anyway, I wanted to get on the radar, there was another one that was in the New Serail, and the school district, I don't know. Football team has tough starts in schedule. I bring this up because I said the tailgate is on the 19th with our opener at Perry. Perry 10-3 last year, Aurora is going to be our second game. They're 9-3. They're playing Menor our third game. They were 5-6, and they also play off their game, they should find their three points. Then our fourth game is Shaden, and they were 16-0, so has a combined record of 42. The first four games are going to be a meat grinder for our teams, but they're up for it. And you wouldn't have scheduled it if you didn't think that they were competitive, especially with Menor. And then week five, we have Madison. This is the last year Madison is going to be in our league, I don't know if you know that. Madison will be leaving the WRC, and they're going to join the CBC. They believe that at this point, it's probably better for their competitiveness for their students, and student body the last couple of years. It's a tough girl. I told them that I didn't think it was a good idea, because so long as I've been here, Madison's always been big, physical kids, but they want to go in another direction. And my opinion is not going to be the way it is right now. But they are the, like I said, in the CBC, the 2023, 2024 season. And we have the three targets.
Thank you. That brings us to the try group report and committee update. So Mrs. Rossi, finance audit, personnel committee, and strategic plan liaison.
I'm not going to talk about the strategic plan because Dr. Kahles just did that, so he just gave us an update on what the plan and agenda is for that for the year. We had a finance personnel meeting on the 21st at 8:00. One of the largest things that we, one of the most important things, I think, that we talked about was our upcoming school year's new agreement with the sheriff's office to provide resource officers at our, at our school. That's been a long time coming, and I appreciate the work and effort that went into putting that new contract together, that makes more sense for the staff that will be working here, I think. Like Dr. Kahles had alluded to, we'll now be, you know, hiring the resource officers that are out in the front of our buildings, we'll be actually hiring them on as employees of the district, which offers them like an attractive job to come to, they'll be able to be eligible for benefits and whatnot, which they haven't had in the past. And I, I'm really grateful to the committee for putting that, that together for our district for actually having many, many conversations with the sheriff's office to get that taken care of. So that was probably a good portion of our meeting. We talked about doing handbook updates, administrative handbook updates, which we need to do, because we know we have the assistant treasurer's position, which wasn't in that handbook, so we have to update that. We talked about safety and security, and some of our monthly financial reports. We went over cash balances, which we don't, we don't normally talk about our cash balances, but Mr. Paco had reviewed what our cash balances were five years ago, comparatively speaking to what they are now, and how much of an excellent position we are in, and the recommendations that, that are put out there by the state on how much we're supposed to have out there in cash reserves. What did they say, three months?
Generally.
Three months. And so, we're doing very well as far as that goes, and so that's good to see. And there are a lot of items on our consent agenda this evening in the personnel section specifically that have to do with contract language and salary increases and whatnot. And after asking a couple of questions, we did talk about all those, because we are offering pay increases for our classified positions, and instead of just offering those as a one-time thing, we actually went through and updated the contract, which is actually, again, we're trying to be proactive in what it is that we do to attract people to work here and whatnot. So, you know, great work to, with our administrators, putting all that information together. So that was our, that was basically our meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Paco, the treasurer's report?
A few slides that will pass out. While that's hot around the OSPA capital conference this year, it's Sunday, November 13th, and Tuesday, November 15th. But anyways, if the board's interested in attending, it's something they'll have to register, something they'll need to do weeks, and then all of that, the cell reservations and all of the, to hold that. Every July, I vote through our financials, a very brief overview. Our fiscal year end is June 30th of each year, so technically, right now, I'm in, I'm in the 2023 of my world, even though the rest of us are still in 2022. So each July, we vote through a summary to kind of show where our year-end actual numbers come in at compared to what we're forecasting in the May. So this breaks out, this first slide breaks out all of our revenue accounts. The first two lines, general property tax, public utility, and then line 1.05, property tax allowances, which is actually the state, the version of the policy that we have. Those numbers are already known, so those numbers, this is the way that the segments come in, so those are already known, so those numbers were, because there was no variance on those numbers. Line 1.035 unrestricted transitaions are state funding, varies 0.73% compared to projected. Restricted transitaion, which is also comes from the state budget, restricted for particular purposes, that one came in pretty much early expected, varies at 0.4. All other revenues, that includes the revenue from joint financing district levy, interest income, rentals, classroom fees, paid fiscal fees, and pretty much anything else that doesn't fall in the categories. That came in $55,000 higher than expected, or 1.15% higher. And then other financing sources, which is essentially either advances that we made, funds that we returned this fiscal year, or refund to private expenditures, which will include, and I usually call it catastrophic cost reinforcement, which is a filing that we do with how to come education for students who are special education at law school, or certain thresholds, depending on where conditions to be filed with the state. All school districts do that throughout file, and they have the pool money to give it up above most school districts based on what is filed. That account came in $203,000 higher than expected, or 0.46%. And I'll go over that just a little more in the next slide, it's going to show what happened there. Now I'll go over that a little more in the next slide, it's going to show what happened there. So our total revenues came in at fifty-one point five million, about three hundred and ten thousand higher than expected or a variance of zero point six one percent. Right, so I've got catastrophic cost reimbursement, this kind of shows a prior history on those numbers. So the new state funding budget called the first school funding plan improved ten percent sub aside so they can increase funding for catastrophic costs for the first one. So what they do is they take our special education funding line, which we get around two hundred and ten thousand dollars, they reduce it by ten percent, they put it in the state pool, catastrophic cost management. So the reimbursement percentage in twenty twenty, we got twenty-six point nine five percent. That increased to forty-seven point seven three percent. So essentially we ended up with an increase in catastrophic cost reimbursement of one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars into almost one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. We expected an increase, but it's hard, it's hard to project what they would be because it's dependent on what all six hundred and eight school districts of Ohio file and whether that pool of money is available for a reimbursement. But in a nutshell, they deducted ten percent of our special education funding of twenty-one thousand eighty-three dollars, but our catastrophic cost reimbursement increased to one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So this should buy some traction, this is the best way to describe that. There are other school districts who are on the other end of it who lost money based on the way that this plan for Manners and the others and based on us being a more wealthy district and having a lower special education funding is how we better it. So it's kind of an odd thing in state.
And again, that's very, there's very specific ways that we can spend that money, correct?
It's pretty much a reimbursement of funds that are spent. So it's basically classified as a prior expense, it's really unrestricted, this kind of goes in back to the general public. Funds that we had spent already, this would be actually for, the reimbursement came in July or in June, which is this year twenty-two, was actually for filing for this for the year twenty-one expenditures. So it's a year behind from when we started that process again in the spring. In spring of the year for a reimbursement. On the expenditure side, the first line, personnel services are expensive for sixty-six thousand higher than expected or zero point two six percent. Entire insurance benefits, I am, came in seventy-three thousand dollars lower, or point six nine percent. Purchase services came in at zero point four five percent variance, supplies came in at zero point three three percent variance. The outliers, capital outlay, which we use our permanent fund, just not expected in these numbers. There's more expenses, our services are large variance there, but that's because numbers sold immaterially. But it wasn't much of a variance, it wasn't much of a not really positive variance. Other objects are things like banking fees, property tax collection fees, that just came in three point five, three point five three percent lower than expected. And then we have transfers out, advances out, there's small variance in there. So we add up our total expenditures, came in forty-seven point two million or within zero point twenty-eight percent lower than expected today. So between the variance between revenue expenditure, our cash balance increased twenty-three point five million and up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, it was zero point nine six percent. The bottom line is just outstanding purchases that came in the year, which is just kind of a guess at that point. Some of the purchases were outstanding in the big code anyway, so it was just a number that we were able to figure out. Has some meaning as far as if there was a large amount of outstanding encompasses or purchase orders that got paid in July, it might affect July to the next fiscal year numbers, but those are, we'd love to catch a little bit of these. On the next slide, I go through this each year, just to kind of work with interest income. So on the left-hand side, this shows all the funds that the interest revenue that we earn out of investments. So we start Ohio with our investment account. So we earned just over a hundred thousand dollars in interest as passing this to the year. That includes the construction funds, those are funds that build and control the construction, which I agree with. Whereas on the total operating funds, nine hundred thousand dollars in interest income. On the right-hand side, I've restored the one, it shows a ten-year district of interest income. So if you look at prior to my arrival, this year's two thousand and twelve, fifteen thousand six trillion, our cash balances were much lower, interest rates were lower, and the funds were not being invested as, not being invested. All that time, as, as we built up cash balances, interest rates improved. You can see this year's like two thousand and twenty, twelve, twenty thousand dollars in interest income. Twenty twenty, and then it hit, interest rates dropped back down to zero levels, which is why we saw it drop on this year, twenty-three, four thousand. With the, I don't know, type of funds rate, it can increase as it haul downs to investment interest rates of all the teenager funds. So as our current investments mature, we'll reinvest those in the higher interest rates and expense interest to give back to the two thousand and twenty.
What are our terms on the, the, when, when do they come up?
It's kind of standard.
Are we rolling one, two, and three?
Yeah, yeah, there's, most of it's shorter term, a lot of it is high coming, mature, it's a month. You have a lot of money in start Ohio, and that too is just the state. And that one is more volatile towards interest rates, but that's earned one point seven, one point seven seven percent right now. I think a year ago it was two point six. So it's, it's, start Ohio account was good, it's liquidated interest rates, but never on our other investment account. We're investing in municipal lines and making paper and CDs, kind of just waiting for those mature losers. All staggered, we'll leave, all start to turn here.
Thank you. Great, that brings us to public comments. If anyone wishing to address the board of education, we recognize that we're president. Speakers are requested to identify themselves, their topic, and comments are limited for three minutes. Anybody have guests, Jim?
Hi, my name is Allison Hereum, I live at eight eight five Outrigger Cove. I've worked in the district for six years, one year at Buckeye, and for the past five years, I've been a sub at Riverview. I have four children, three who are currently in the district, and one who graduated last year. Mr. Hack, you listed all of your accomplishments and your relationship to our school district, but I'm curious how much time you've ever spent in a classroom to cast judgment on the responsive classroom program. You say the lack of opposition to the program is due to the echo chamber that it exists in, but have you considered that you can't find opposing information because it does actually work? Mr. Fishel, you are chair of the curriculum department. Following up on what Ms. Bickerstaff asked earlier, please give specific examples of how CRT is being taught in our schools. I'm more than happy to give you my contact information, so you can send me that. Again, I would like specific, concrete examples. And just out of curiosity, what is wrong with using a student's preferred pronouns? To switch subjects, I'd like to let everyone know that the boys alumni soccer game is Saturday, August sixth at five o'clock. We're going to have the Barra de Taco food truck there. If you'd like to come watch, we'd love to have you, there's no charge. And if we have any alumni that would like to play, we would be more than happy to see you out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
John Music Queen will tell you. I got a couple of things, I'm going to talk about to the five of you. Your number one job is to educate the students. I've lived here my entire life, started on Manner Avenue fifty-one, graduated in sixty-three from Riverside. And so many of the people I've talked, they're saying the same thing. The kids are not getting the education. And just like was talked earlier, you go talk to the H R people, the Fortune one hundred and five hundred companies, they're all saying the same thing. The colleges, colleges, I don't want to pay them anymore, but the thing about it is that is your number one responsibility, responsibility is to educate our students. And in my opinion, we're not doing it very, I think it was one point two to one point seven million students left in public, public schools last year. And there's going to be more. We, United States costs per student more than any other school, any other education system in the country, in the world. And what are we getting, what are the taxpayers getting for their money? And just like when I work, you know, there was, I always, and I go to a lot of meetings, may it be D C, Columbus, or here in the county or whatever. Transparency, oversight and accountability comes with being paid by taxpayer dollars. That's a choice people make to work for the public. And everybody should be held accountable in my position, in my opinion. And I'm asking the five of you, you know, and just like the ratings, I talked to a school board member. And they said to me, oh yeah, the way they redid the proficiency ratings, changed four times in ten years. And I said, well, let's raise the basketball hoop down to four feet so everybody can dunk. And the thing about, talk to the people who do the hiring, talk to them. And the thing about is, like I said, in my opinion, we are failing our children. We need, we need, everybody said, oh, it happens here, no, it happens here. When I went to Riverside, we didn't have that shared deputies, we didn't need this, we didn't need that. What, what is happening, it's happening here at Riverside also. To say it isn't, it's not truthful. So I'm asking the five of you, to do, do a better job of educating our students. And I know a lot of taxpayers feel the same way. I talk to them all the time. So I'm asking you, and the parents, not just the taxpayers, but the parents also. They want, their kids are our future. So I'm asking you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
With the board's permission, I'd also like to borrow my dad's time.
We don't typically combine time because we can't do it for everybody, so, sorry.
Hello, my name is Sarah Salon, my pronouns are she day, and I'm a resident of Kingsley Township. I graduated Riverside as one of six valid appointments in two thousand and twenty-one. I have come here today to talk about the growth of students and the opportunity to examine their priorities. Through my time at Riverside, I witnessed students calling each other racist, homophobic, and neurodivergent slurs. I witnessed a student saying that he hates Chinese people because they started COVID. I've heard stories about a student making Holocaust jokes, angry Jewish student. This is not okay. There are consequences for letting students get away with harmful behavior like this. Discriminatory boxes, people who dumb blind face, and police members killing black people all started off as children this age who weren't able to examine the truth of equality. Now I'm not saying that all children are going to grow up to be some normal being. They might be someone who calls the cops when a young black girl is selling water on the street that her friend. The point is, when students don't know how to get better every day, they are unable to. There are multiple ways to address these problems. Two of these ways include critical race theory and social emotional learning. I know there is a lot of worry about topics like CRT and S E L. By hiding behind these letters and not saying the phrase out loud, this is a good way to forget what these teaching styles are all about. I would like to emphasize that these are different teaching styles that sometimes combine concepts, but ultimately are different teaching styles. Both are helpful in assisting students' growth and understanding of the world. The concept of critical race theory can be dated back to nineteen eighty when Professor Derrick Bell left Harvard Law School after a career of analyzing race discrimination in the justice system. But the ideas behind critical race theory can be dated back to the time of Martin Luther King Jr., when he acknowledged systemic racism and violence in nineteen sixty-seven. White Americans must recognize that justice for black people cannot be achieved without radical changes in the structure of our societies. Social emotional learning, on the other hand, can be traced back to three A D B C, when Plato was questioning the development of character in relation to education. In Plato's The Republic, he proposed a holistic education height. This included art, physical education, math, science, character, and moral judgment. He stated that by maintaining a sound system of education and upbringing, you can make the citizen of good character. I can go into further details about these theories and concepts that will come out with anyone wishing to converse. I know a lot of things have been run around within the school board and the public about Marxism being at the root of CRT and the occult being at the root of S E L. But even though some of the facts used to push these theories are correct and the connections are correct, the argument makes assumptions to push a conspiracy. A source found out at a previous board meeting, the source being Protect Ohio Children, is used to prove that these theories don't work, but don't provide sound evidence of the concepts being taught, much less an negative effect on students. Also, respect people's pronouns. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, Jim?
Oh, yes. My name is Rebecca Biruni, I am recently, last year, a new resident of Riverside School District. This is actually my first board meeting, very interesting. My question is, I've looked over the district website, I've Google searched, I've looked, and I love how you guys send out flyers about what's going on. And I congratulate you on doing that, because I did get that in my last district. But I haven't seen nothing to talk about what the district is doing regarding Centifole four thirty-six and the current dyslexia legislation that has come out. I know that the dyslexia book, handbook has just been pushed out and that it's given us a little extra time. We do what we need to do, but speaking with other residents, I've heard nothing from the school district about dyslexia. Dyslexia affects one in five people, and right now, currently nationally, only one in ten are being diagnosed. So I'm just curious, curriculum department and so forth, what's being, what, you know, eventually, I'm sure you've talked about this at a prior board meeting, I apologize for bringing it up again. But what are we doing to help those with dyslexic tendencies so that we can become a better society? So we can act, so we can put out kids who can read better than the national average of thirty, I think it's thirty-nine or thirty-nine percent passing all of our, our reading tests and so forth. So, not in our district, but across the nation. So I would just like to know where we're going, because I can't find anything on the website about the literacy plan or anything of that nature.
Any other?
Before you leave, stop and talk with your contentmen and follow up with questions.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to acknowledge and commend Mr. Arlessick and his entire staff of grounds maintenance and building maintenance and janitorial for the outstanding work that I've seen them doing all summer long. If you guys have looked around, the school is looking quite a bit different than it did at the end of the school year. Parking lots painted in line, the rooms are clean, I think the terrazzo floor upgrade looks marvelous. I hope that it lives up to how it was sold to the school district, that it's going to last as long as it does. I see that they put the lift in at the John R. W. stairwell, and even the cafeteria in John R. Williams is looking amazing. Couple of things that I've noticed in approximately seventy-five hours that Mr. Fishel and I have spent looking in as many classrooms as we can get to, is that some of the things that really should be addressed between now and when school starts are comfort issues, acknowledging the hot summer, those being windows, screens, fans, okay? We've noticed, I've noticed that there are numerous rooms at John R. that have ceiling fans mounted to the ceiling and wired into the ceiling lights, okay? I've also noticed that many of the windows don't open properly, don't stay up, and many of them are missing screens. So to that note, I am offering any of you teachers, if you have screens that don't work in your room, I'm going to start making screens and screen frames that can be mounted to your windows. If you just reach out to me, my number's four four oh four nine four two six eight three, and I will make screens for your room. I'm going to be doing that for room two fourteen, Mr. Skoruppa's room. Another thing I want to do is start a GoFundMe campaign to buy a fan for a teacher, okay? I'm going to commit personally to pay for the purchase and installation for four ceiling fans, two of which are already earmarked for room two fourteen J. If the administration will allow those to be installed, I would pay for the purchase of the fan, I will pay for the installation of the fan. If the school district requires a licensed electrician to put them up, I'll pay for that. I'm going to start a GoFundMe page to try to get people to donate to that effort so that the teachers can have something reasonable when fall comes, when we know that first week of school is going to be unbearable. And I can tell you that being in these classrooms in the summertime with Mr. Fishel, you know, turning those fans on makes a world of difference, okay? And to respond to the comment about what's wrong with the pronouns, well, you know, if we're going to change pronouns, then I want my adjectives. My adjectives would be handsome, fit and brilliant, okay? Now, when I look in the mirror, I see a middle-aged, bald, fat guy, okay? I own that. If everybody called me fat, I'd probably go on a diet, okay? But once again, pronouns deny who we really are. They are contrary to science, they are contrary to biology, okay? And that's one issue of the overall discussion that was had prior to me starting. Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak, but I felt compelled by the gentleman that just stopped, I wish he would have stayed, because I'd like, Daniel Brennan, I have a recent graduate, two thousand and twenty-one, and assuming to be graduate this year. Kids nowadays are and assuming to be graduate this year. Kids nowadays are held to a higher standard than we were. I mean, if you look back in your high school courses, and I took higher-level courses, the kids in school now are way, are pushed way harder than we ever did. They're taking AP classes, they're, some of them are graduating with an associate's degree after, at leaving high school. So I think there's this huge misconception that, I don't know, it's just our high school, but high school in general are not living up to expectations, and I don't think that's true. Like I said, my son finished his first year of college, and again, they're doing work beyond what we would have done at 18. So that's just from a mom's perspective of a college student, a student. And Ms. Salon, I think you graduated 2021. Your speech was really great. Your valedictorian speech was really great. So congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comment? So that brings us to our consent agenda for finance and audits. So we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, Aids H. Second? Second. Thank you. While we're having discussion, I'd like to thank the donors and the donations that we got, $500 from P E S to Riverside High School for Black and Gold Students of the Month, and $1,000 from Thomas and Janet Morris for Middle School Football Hands. Is there any other discussion about the finance items?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Linda Gracy?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Louis Kinsky?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to personnel. Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through C. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? All right. If not, can we call the roll, Mr. Tyco?
Linda Gracy?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Louis Kinsky?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda for curriculum and programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, Aids H. Second?
I'll second.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Louis Kinsky?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Linda Gracy?
Aye.
Motion carried. Brings us to buildings and grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds, same agenda, items A through C, as recommended by the superintendent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And any discussion?
Louis Kinsky?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Linda Gracy?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. Hey, that brings us to the Board of Education update. Any updates?
I would like to send out, like, congratulations to Ariana, Ariana, and I'm hoping I say, I'm saying her name right. Ariana, Ariana Hay, who's going to be going to compete in Italy for baton twirling in August, intern Italy. I think that's super exciting, and I wish her the best of luck. And she'll likely be back twirling for Riverside at the end of the month, which is really cool. That's super cool, very exciting.
I received a letter from Boy Scout Troop 62, and it says, Dear Superintendent Phyllis, and pleased to share news with you that Boy Scout Alexander Joseph Till, a member of the Boy Scout of Merrickup, Troop 62 in Kingsville, has obtained the rank of Eagle Scout. Alexander worked extremely hard to attain this rank. It is an honor, which is reached by only 2% of the scouts that enter the program. I'm asking you to help us celebrate with Alexander by writing him a letter of congratulations, or passing a resolution of congratulations by your organization and forwarding it to the address above. Alexander's project consisted of building the first walkway to the flagpole at the South Leeway Meeting Hall in Leeway Township. Alexander raised $1,474 in cash and donations with 250 man-hours with the help of his troop. In his Boy Scout troop, Alexander had served as a senior patrol leader, assistant senior patrol leader, patrol leader, assistant to patrol leader, and troop guide, quartermaster, den chef, and chaplain's aide, helping others, a second agent to him, and he is a role model for the other scouts. Alexander recently graduated from Riverside High School in the Riverside local school district. He was in the Riverside marching band as a two-bus section leader, in theater, and on the track and field team for shot, hook, and discus. Alexander lives with his mother and father, two sisters, and brother in Cockwood Township and Lake County. I hope you can assist us in formally congratulating Alexander on his achievement, and I thank you for your time and effort. That's from Gina Parker. Typically, we have our current students come. Since he's graduated, what I would like to do with the board's approval is send him another congratulatory, congratulatory letter to the number of the board.
Just to note, I think he just left for boot camp, so he is, I think he's done now. So, yeah, so he just left for boot camp.
That would be something fun for his family to forward on. Well, if it's a camp, that would be super cool.
Anything else? Any other board updates? Nope. All right. So that brings us on to a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel matters for appointment and/or appointment and compensation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we call the roll for me, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Linda Gracy?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.